I'll call this meeting to order on Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2018. Our first meeting of the new year. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Shell Osman of the Life Church Smyrna Assembly of God at 4100 King Street, King Springs Road, I'm sorry. Who will come forward at this time and give us our invocation and lead us in the place of the flag. Would everyone please rise?
You went on to tell us in your word in First Timothy 2 that we should pray for those who are the governing authorities so that we may live peaceful lives marked by godliness and dignity. So Lord, if we'll do our part, we'll ask them to do their part. So we do pray tonight for the mayor and council members that you would give them guidance and direction, wisdom and grace, not only in this first meeting of 2018, but in every meeting going forward, with every decision that would be made, that they would all be for the betterment of our city and ultimately for your glory, we would ask. And I pray this prayer in the name of my Savior Jesus Christ. Amen. And amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shell. And for those folks that are looking for a new church or new to the community, Life Church is located on King Springs Road. Just go up the hill and to the right. And our newest member of council, I believe, is a member there. Is that correct? So Mayor Lynn, here's your pastor. So, thank you so much, Shell, for coming to get my invitation. Thank you. Go Bulldogs. Don't know that we have any agenda changes. It looks like a lengthy agenda, but it's probably not going to last that long. The mayor will report there is nothing other than to let everybody know next Monday night, something's never happened before, the University of Georgia and University of Alabama are going to be playing for the national championship. I'm sure all of the Bulldog fans and Bulldog Nation, we're all going to be there rooting on Georgia. They played great last night. So it should be a pretty easy game. Item four, land issues, filings and annexations. We don't have any. Privilege licenses, we have two. A is 2018-04 Public Hearing Privilege License Request, 2018-04 Beer Wine Liquor Package, 1651 Roswell Street, 773 Liquor LLC Doing Business as R&amp;L Package Store with Willie Tyler as the agent. I will ask, is the agent here? Okay, Willie, if you'll... I will ask that we get the background from our assistant city administrator, Scott Andrews, who is here taking over for Tammy Sandler Jones, who's been on vacation. Scott, will you give us the background?
Sorry for the technical difficulty there. So item A, 2018-04, this is a public hearing, privileged license request, beer, wine, liquor, 1651 Roswell Street, 773 Liquors LLC, Doing Business as R&amp;L Package Store with Willie Tyler as the agent.
Okay. Is there any background to that as far as this currently licensed location? Hold on for a second.
Yeah, I can probably chime in here and help a little bit, Scott. If that's okay with you. This is kind of a... This is an unusual situation. The applicant's here, I've spoken with his lawyer, and this is a location that was involved in a sting fairly recently, and they sold to a minor. And we've got to kind of get through that issue. There are, you know, there are charges that were made. So this is kind of the first step of that. We have come to an agreement as to those charges, and I think council is going to talk a little bit about what happened. But I think the council is really interested to know why the sale occurred to the minor. Other than that, other than the fact that there's this sale to a minor and these charges that were pending but have now been, are in the process of being resolved, council wants to know what happened, why it happened, how it's not going to happen again, basically.
Just so I can make sure this is clear, this is a currently licensed location. This is more or less just to change an agent. But I want to make sure that it meets all the distance requirements and all that. But before we go any further, I want to make sure everybody understands this is a public hearing, and I want to know if there's anybody here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this new license. You guys are pretty good size. I don't see anyone that's in opposition. So if you'll identify yourself, this is Mr. Blackburn's district, but I'll ask you to identify.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Alan Begner. I practice law in South Sandy Springs, and I represent the applicant. And he submitted, he has submitted a application to own a established old location liquor store and suffered a sting in which he served a minor. He was, he was, he has no excuse for it. He didn't ask for the ID. There's no excuse for that. He knows that if the mayor and council are kind enough to give him a second chance, which is what we're here to do, that he'll be under the microscope. We've talked about things. I'll let him also address, council, if I may afterwards. He is going to check everyone's ID. He's going to, even if he thinks he checked someone's ID a few days ago, he's going to check another, check it again. It's my experience in a lot of alcohol licensing cases that a mistake is sometimes made because you think the person who was there two days ago is the same person, and it wasn't. He, he has, he's retired from military with honorable discharge. He's been a banker. He just moved here to settle in the city he loves as a liquor store owner. And we ask, that's what's happened. Again, there's no excuse for this at all, but we're hoping that the license will issue and that he expect, we are intending to plead guilty to the charges. I think in a couple of days, we're on a nine o'clock agenda for Thursday, I think. And we also realize that we will face what I think is an administrative hearing officer, not the mayor and council, for potential discipline, in which we'll talk more about our plans. But having said that, I'd like for Mr. Tyler to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, it's an honor to be in front of you guys. I appreciate your time. And as Mr. Begner, my attorney said, as a military veteran, there is no excuses. So I stand here and I offer none. So I just hope that you guys will consider the application and that we'll be allowed to, you know, do business here in the great city of Smyrna and be a great asset to the city.
Mr. Blackburn.
Mr. Tyler, would this be your first opportunity of having a business in Smyrna?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can you tell me why you didn't ask for the identification?
Once again, Ms. Blackburn, there is no excuse. However, I would say the issue, with the instance, it was my fourth day in the store, and we were going through closing procedures. And as a soldier, I know better, you have to be disciplined, you have to pay attention at all times. And I was paying more attention to the closing aspect of the part than the other piece of it.
Do you know the age of the individual that you sold the alcohol to?
No, ma'am.
Let me ask you a question. This didn't come out right here. My understanding is you're buying the store, in the process of buying the business. You've got all the documents done to do that. And so you going forward would be the owner?
Yes, sir.
Of the store? Okay. And when is that plan to be finalized, you think?
Once the licenses are finalized, I've gone through, since that, and since I've gone through a lot of training, gone through the alcohol and sales training here that's required for the license, things of that nature. So yes, once this part of it is done, that's when everything will be official.
And when you sold to the minor, were you arrested on the spot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that included what, being taken in a police car to the police precinct in handcuffs?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so you've already seen the pain to an extent of what happens when you make a mistake?
First time, you know, and first time ever being arrested. So like I say, you know, during the years I've done in service, never had any issues like that. So that was a different experience, definitely. So I'll never forget that.
You think that's likely to help your...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to share one other thing with you, Mr. Tyler. It is a known fact that underage drinking is a very serious problem in Georgia. So I'd like for you to really take that into consideration and make sure that, you know, no matter who it is, that identification is asked for.
Yes, ma'am. And I can guarantee you through the training that I've received and the training that I'll provide to the employees in the store, that will be first and foremost on all of our attention.
So this incident happened prior to you getting your training, the required training?
Yes, sir.
So this, if you would have had the training, would it have...
Oh, definitely. Definitely.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Ms. Blackburn, any other questions? Ms. Blackburn?
Okay. Well, I move that the license request 2018-04 for package sales of beer, wine and liquor be granted to 773 Liquors LLC, DVA R&amp;L Package Store with Willie Tyler as the agent.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this previous license request. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
And we don't want to ever see you again. I mean, nothing personal, just Alan, see you later. Item B, 2018-01, Public Hearing Privilege License Request, 2018-01 Beer and Wine Package, 2175 Concord, Old Concord Road, Suite 100. Mira Lachini as the agent is the applicant here. Okay? The background, please. Mr. Andrews.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. This previously passed unanimously in license averance meeting. This business owner has gone through the classes and has passed successfully, and we have no issues with this. This business is located in Ward 5.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this previous license for beer and wine package? Let the record show there is none. Got the background. This is in Ms. Wilkinson's district. Ms. Wilkinson?
Hi. Thank you all for coming tonight. I just wanted to ask you a few questions about the process that you've gone through. Did you go through the alcohol training for the city of Smyrna through the police department?
Yes, ma'am.
And you understand how serious it is with selling to below age?
Yes, ma'am.
And you've just had an example of it tonight. So, but could you also tell everyone here what type of store that you're having? I know you're gonna, you have the package for the wine and beverage is the license.
On her behalf as her manager, it's just a convenience store, just like your normal household items like eggs, milk, cookies, cereal, stuff like that, candies, and then just a couple of cooler doors with a beer and wine.
Okay. What are the hours of your store?
6:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Okay. And the name of your store is?
Shop and Go.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for coming tonight. And at this time, I would like to move to approve item privilege license, item 5B, 2018-01, Public Hearing for Privilege License Request, 2018-01 for Beer and Wine Package at 2175 Old Concord Road, Suite 100, with Mira Lachini as the agent.
I have motion is second to approve this previous license request. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote.
Max. Oh, there it goes. Okay.
Max? Max don't vote yet.
Okay. Well, that's because it disappeared on my screen.
Yeah. 7-0, that's approved 7-0. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Max. Six Formal Business, A, Ordnance 2017-15, Second Public Hearing, approval, approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 98, entitled Traffic and Vehicles, to include Section 98-10 prohibiting the use of handheld mobile telephone or portable electronic devices while operating a motor vehicle. The background, Mr. Andrews.
Actually, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'll defer to Mayor Pro Tem Norton.
Okay. Seems like you're getting out of a lot of stuff tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that I've already presented this ordinance at the first public hearing a couple of months ago, but for the benefit of our newly elected council member and those who may not have attended that meeting, I'd like to talk a little bit, take a minute and talk a little bit about how this came about and address some specifics in the ordinance. Over the past several months, I've been increasingly concerned about distracted driving in our city and the public safety risks in Smyrna and to our citizens. And ultimately, I think this law will save lives. Every day, I observe drivers paying attention to the phone in their hands rather than the road. I see this everywhere I drive, walk or bike, but specifically here in the city of Smyrna, as recently as last month, I stood on the corner of Atlanta Road at the community center for several hours and counted the cars that were going by with people that had their phones in their hands, not looking at all at the road or me or anybody else, just at their phone. And I counted over 500. And that's going through one of our main thoroughfares through our city, close to our downtown. And this is a severe danger and extremely dangerous to our motor, other motorists, bikers, pedestrians, and even kids that are going to school. This is something that really needs to be addressed. I attended all of the meetings of the Georgia House of Representatives Study Committee on distracted driving over the summer, and I listened to compelling testimony from injured victims, families that have suffered unimaginable loss, advocacy groups and law enforcement. And at the end of the day, this study committee highlighted how much of a problem distracted driving is, how truly scary it can be, and that we must address this issue because the statewide no texting law, the current law that's on the books is simply not enforceable. And it won't change driver behavior. And that's exactly the intent of this ordinance, to change driver behavior and get those behind the wheel focused on the road. This ordinance requires that all cell phone use while driving be hands-free. You can still talk on the phone, use navigation or apps, as long as you don't have the phone in your hand and you're using hands-free technology. We've had a lot of feedback from the community on this over the past few months, have made several additions and changes to this ordinance to address citizen concerns. Number one, we added the one-touch rule. So if you are, if your phone is affixed to your car in some way, and you get a phone call, you can hit it and answer your call. Or if you want to initialize your navigation, you can hit it and initialize your navigation or your apps, as long as you use it hands-free from there on. We cap the fine at $150. Not set the fine as a minimum, capped it. So it can be only $150, and that gives the judge discretion if she wants to do a lower fine and maybe add a traffic court component, she can do that, but it won't be any more than $150. We put the effective date as April 2nd. The reason that we did that is because there's been some talk down at the State House that they may take the recommendations from this study committee, introduce legislation and try to get something passed this year. Problem is, it's a statewide election year, and so all the statewide constitutional officers, members of the House and Senate are up for reelection, and typically, very little seems to happen in those years. We had some feedback that why would you pay money to put signs up all over the city letting people know this was a hands-free zone, and then the state passes something, then you've wasted taxpayer money? By moving the effective date to April 2nd, we will know, that's the end of session, we will know if they pass something or not. And so if they don't, then we'll go ahead with our plan, and if they did, then we won't have to do that. And the other thing is, we made this a temporary two-year ordinance. So at the end of that two years, we can look, two years, we can look at the data, see if this is changing driver behavior, and if it is, then we'll keep it. If it's not, we can tweak it or change it. And I want to address some specific, some specifics from critics of this public safety initiative. I think the feedback that I've received has been overwhelmingly positive, but I want to specifically address some of these concerns. I want to make clear that this is not a gotcha moment or a revenue generator. What we want to do is make sure the public is educated about this law. And so addition to the April 2nd effective date, Chief Lee has said that the first 45 days of implementation will be just warnings given. And we've got, we don't want to, we're not going to be like Marietta did and be in street clothes and, you know, walking down the street trying to get everybody. This is not, this is not the intent of this law. What we're trying to do is, is make sure everybody knows what's going on and change behavior. And like I said, we cap the fine at $150. Some people have said that this is a revenue generator for the city. I think it costs at least $150 probably for an officer to even issue the citation. And I would say that a capped $150 fine in a city that has a 90-plus million dollar annual budget, those claims are just simply untrue. Some have said that Uber and Lyft, that many rely on for travel after they've been having some fun, are going to leave the city if we pass this ordinance. But I've actually worked closely with Uber on this, and really, the one-touch rule was, it came out of conversations with them. They support this ordinance. They gave me a letter. I won't read the whole thing, but that basically says, you know, this is, this is a good, this is a good thing you're doing. We appreciate the city of Smyrna's commitment to keeping its roads safe. They're in favor of what we're trying to do. And some have said, I think we've had one person speak publicly at our meetings, that there's no data to support that this will change anything. The House Study Committee issued their report today and shows that of the 15 states that have passed hand-free laws, hands-free distracted driver laws, 13 of them saw an average 17.5% decrease in traffic fatalities within two years after passing and enforcing these new laws. The other two states just didn't, the laws were too new and they didn't have statistical data yet. So that's pretty significant. And finally, as I said at the last public hearing, I have a wife, a two-year-old daughter and a one-year-old son, and they're all here tonight. You probably heard my son earlier. I'd hate for some tragic accident to happen to them or to one of your family members at the hands of a distracted driver when we could have done something to prevent it. With that, are you?
This is a public hearing. This is the second public hearing. Anyone who would like to make any public comment concerning this issue, if you'll come forward, give us your name and your address, where you live at, and then you can make a public comment one way or another. Don't be bashful. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, Scott. If you want to speak, you need to be sworn in. So anybody that thinks, even if you just think you want to speak, please come forward and be sworn in. And so everybody come forward, even if you decide not to speak, that's okay. Okay, there we go. Come on, come on. This will be the largest crowd we've had. Raise your hand and repeat after me. All right, if y'all will have a seat, and it doesn't matter who goes first. I would just say this. I don't know what your conversation's going to be or your comments, but you know, after a while, if it's all about the same scenario, we'll probably get it pretty quick. So just tell us who you are, where you live at, and any comments that you and your son would like to make.
Hi, Mayor Bacon. I don't know if you guys remember, but you had me here about six weeks ago, and you recognized my son and his baseball team for winning the state championship. And when I caught up with Councilman Norton and what was taking place here, I was moved. Having, you know, dealing with kids all the time and coaching and seeing them riding their bikes to and from practice and the different things, and also knowing, you know, not just the things that I see and what he mentioned, but just the temptation that I have to grab my phone and do things. I think it's really important what you guys are considering here. I know it's probably not going to be popular. Sometimes being on the side of right isn't popular. Anecdotally, I can tell you, when the seatbelt law was changed, my father, wonderful man, very stubborn man, he swore to my family at the dinner table that he was not going to put his seatbelt on. And to his credit, he did not, until he was pulled over for the first time, and he has put his seatbelt on every time since then. And my family has been safer because of it. And I think that's what we're trying to affect here. I think that's what Councilman Norton is trying to do, is to change the behavior. And while, hopefully, it will happen on the state level, if we can be the leader for people like Jackson, for our children, they're not going to know the difference by the time they can get in a car. It's going to be automatic for them that the phone gets put away, or that the technology will be different for them, that they can't be as distracted as we are right now. But it's up to us to kind of lead the way. And so as you consider this, you know, I appreciate what you're doing, and I hope that, you know, you guys err on the side of little guys like Jackson. So thank you very much.
Did you give us your name and address?
I'm sorry. Chuck Martin, and my address is 5010 Duxford Drive in Smyrna, 30082.
Anything your son wants to say?
You want to say something?
Your dad took up most of your time.
What about, what about yesterday, coming home from church?
So yesterday, coming home from church, there was someone texting while they were driving, and they ran two red lights, and there was almost a very bad accident.
So you were driving?
I wasn't. There was someone else driving, and they ran two red lights.
Well, that's good. That's good to know. Well, thank you very much. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Go Dogs.
That was for you. That was for you.
Anyone, it is no certain order. Everybody raise their hand at the same time.
I'm Craig in Kathy Clark. We live at 1484 Falkirk Lane in Kennesaw. And we came and spoke a couple of weeks ago before, and shared the story of our daughter Emily, who we lost almost three years ago now, will be three years, April 22nd, to a distracted driver, her and four of her nursing, fellow nursing students. So we've been personally affected by distracted driving and the effects of it. And so we are here to support this, and, you know, to the gentleman's credit before, if it's your family member, or it's one of your loved ones that you can save by passing this amendment, would you do it? You know, if you knew it was your daughter or your child sitting in that car, would you pass it? And that's what I really put on you, because I know that I would change it in a heartbeat, because we have been directly affected. We just came through the holidays, which is, you know, one of the most difficult times. And, yeah, we miss her every day, but really, really during this time of year. So strongly encourage you guys to move forward with this and lead the way, you know, set the example, set the example for the state, and give them something to follow.
Has nobody, no one wants to get that call? That your child's not going to be there? But y'all are, this is something good.
I'm going to help you out by cutting you off, because I know you, this is emotional for you. Any reason, because I, I know that y'all have been down for the state, and have testified before the, whatever committee it is. Any reason why the state's not moving forward with this, to where it becomes a state, a state law? Is it just because it's not 100% slam dunk?
Um, you know, I think Derek eloquently stated some of the opposition that you hear around it. You know, people, they just don't want to give up their technology. And, you know, similar to what the gentleman shared with before about the seatbelt law, you know, I very much remember the same conversations in my household.
Right.
And it took a long time to change people's behaviors, but, you know, it can happen, and that's what you're talking about. You're talking about changing behaviors. And people don't want to give up the technology. And I know, you know, before it happened to us, you just, you don't think it's going to happen to you. And, you know, that always happens to somebody else, still. You know, you sit there at night and see your daughter's face on the TV as one that was lost.
Thank y'all very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else that was?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Stephen Jones. I live at 2823 Spring Drive. Been proud to live in Smyrna for 41 years, in Ward 1. And I want to say that I'm in support of the cell phone ordinance, and, because I believe it will save those lives, and that it will bring attention to the, how distracted the drivers on our roads are becoming by holding these cell phones. I want to take you back to the past. Before I had a cell phone, my parents gave me this book. This is a Cobb County map book, Fulton County map book. I had great parents. They taught me before I started the car, look at this book and know where you're going. Memorize where you're going. Put it in the seat beside you and proceed to go. If I forgot where to turn, pull over, parking lot, side street, somewhere safe, pick up the book, look at it, remind me what turns are coming up, and then put it back down. You can take that same principle, like we used to use these, and add it to this device. You can pull the map up, look at it. I look at it, I know where I'm going, and actually, I can even put this, as you know, in your cup holder or on the seat, just like the map, and it will tell you ahead of time where to turn. And you don't even have to look at it. And when you receive a call, I also do the hands-free. But I also take it a step further. When somebody calls me, I ask, is this an emergency, or if is it, is it important to talk now? If it is, let me find a parking lot, a safe place, or somewhere to pull off to talk with you. If not, then I need to be driving. And every driver, if they're a good driver, they don't have time to talk, because they should be asking themselves questions. What is the car doing to my left? What is the car doing to my right? How close am I to the car in front of me? There's an intersection coming up, light's green. I can anticipate when that light's going to change red by looking to see the pedestrian crosswalks and the counter counting down, and I know when that turns zero, the light's going to change. If that's not available, I check the intersections on the left and the right, see if there are cars sitting there to trigger the light. So my point is, driving is a full-time job. I commend Councilman Norton taking the lead and the initiative on this ordinance, and if the Georgia legislation does not proceed, I just hope that City of Smyrna will step up, be the leader for this great state of Georgia that we live in. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Jenny Hardy, and I live at 9545 Fenbrook Court in Alpharetta, Georgia. And I became an advocate for highway safety when our family was involved in a violent car crash in 2002. And our situation was, our family was driving on a quiet two-lane rural road in South Georgia, and there was an SUV that was coming towards us, and there was a logging truck that was crossing over the highway. And the logging truck had two rumble strips and a stop sign. But that logging truck ignored all of that, and he hit the tail end of the SUV, and when he did, the SUV lost control. And the SUV literally shaved off the whole left-hand side of our van, and the sliding door on the driver's side was thrown 30 yards in the opposite direction. We spun around two times and landed in this deep ravine along the side of the road, so deep that you couldn't see our vehicle from the side of the road. That logging truck driver who blew through the two rumble strips and the stop sign, was he driving distracted? Was he on his cell phone? Was he placing a call? You see, we'll never know. He fled the scene of the crash. They never found him. He was never held accountable for his actions. Our crash has always been classified as a hit and run. Our youngest daughter Madison was five years old at the time of our crash. The paramedics and the helicopter flight crew who arrived on scene didn't know if she would survive. She endured multiple surgeries to put her back together again, but a $15 booster seat saved her life. We were one of the few lucky ones, who she did survive. And I share our story because she did survive. And like I said, we were some of the lucky ones, but there are many stories out there where families are not nearly as lucky as we were. But I hope that by sharing our story, people know that they can survive car crashes. And we need to do everything we can and make the right choices to be able to survive car crashes. And those right choices and those right decisions are things like putting the phones down, keeping your hands on the steering wheel, keeping your eyes on the road, focusing on driving, and not driving distracted. And passing legislation and ordinances like Councilman Norton has put forth before you today, to go hands-free and to be hands-free driving within the city of Smyrna, and hopefully as well within the whole state of Georgia come this next legislative session. But only through doing those kinds of things and doing the right actions can lives be saved and can the roads be safer. This past year in 2017, 1,493 deaths occurred in the state of Georgia. Some people would call those a statistic, but those are lives. Those are 1,493 families who loved ones were lost on Georgia highways, who are not going to be coming home. Those are families whose lives are forever changed as a result of a car crash. So I applaud the efforts of Councilman Norton, and I hope, and I respectfully ask, that you all will pass this ordinance tonight, and make your roads safer, and save the lives of your constituents and the people that come through the city of Smyrna. So I thank you for your efforts, and I applaud your, and your efforts tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that was sworn in that would like to give testimony? You sworn, okay.
Good evening. My name is Sean Martin. I live at 2884 Anderson Circle, Smyrna, Georgia. I am a 21-year resident of Smyrna, and I love this city. I have two children. I have a husband, and I have been involved in a lot of community initiatives. I love the city. I love its people, and I believe in you guys to make the right decision. I offer no emotional story, but I do want to say that if this is truly a cultural shift, then let it be so for all of the community. In other words, a public awareness campaign that is targeted to everyone in the city, not just, you know, one side of the railroad tracks versus the other, but you actually bring the education to the residents of Smyrna, all of Smyrna, not just one side of Smyrna. This is an issue that is very important. I have two kids. My five-year-old is right back there. I have a 20-year-old Georgia State student. I love my kids. So by all means, this is important legislation, but we've got to go about it smartly. We've got to think about how these types of violations will impact communities that are underrepresented, so that the education component that you roll out actually makes its way in a democratic fashion to all people, because these types of violations on somebody's driving record will actually impact their livelihood in a major, major way. And so I am not here advocating on behalf of those violators, but looking really for a solution that will truly solve the problem in a way that is fair, democratic, and does the job that Derek Norton seeks to do. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is James Nabanjo. I live at 1280 West Peachtree Street in Atlanta. And here, not to oppose your proposition, but to kind of explain it essentially. So no one is against distracted driving, but there's, the issue is not about, this issue is about handheld. There's no study I've seen so far that actually shows that there's a difference between being distracted while you have your, yourself in your hand, or having it hooked up to a, some kind of hands-free device. Matter of fact, there was a study done at the Stanford University of Automated Innovation Facility, and they tested 30 drivers, 15 hands, hands-full, 15 hands-free. With the hands-full results, it was one passed, five failed by going the wrong way, nine failed by, by crashing. With the hands-free, one passed, six failed, eight failed by crashing. So there's no, there's really no difference so far that I've seen between hands-full or hands-free. It's, the issue's about distracted driving. That's what we need to tackle. You could have somebody driving with a, with a hands-free device with a coffee in one hand, and the steering in, in the other hand, and talking, talking on their hands, hands-free set. I think they're, they're more of a, a threat to, to Smyrna residents than somebody who has just, just one handed, one, one device in their hand, talking. And even the, the Ross Raider Insurance Institute of Highway Safety has said it's really about the conversation. It's, it's about the distraction, not the fact that someone has a device in their hand. What if you have your hand against your cheek, and you have one hand on the steering? What if you have someone in the car? That, it's, it's, there's no study that's, that's showing that having two hands on the steering actually saves lives. It's the distraction that saves lives. How do we prevent people from texting? How do we prevent people from having conversations, deep conversations behind the wheel, rather than saying, well, let's get people to not have, you know, a hand with a phone against their face? I don't think that's the issue. So before we, we kind of move forward with this, I'd like us to kind of think about that. It, it's a great gesture. It's, it's a nice gesture, you know, you're really looking to save lives. But there's no evidence I've seen that actually backs that having a handheld device actually saves lives. It is the distraction that saves lives, not, not the device in your hand. I mean, if your car has a problem, you can wash it, but it's not going to help it, you know, move. It's, it's about fixing the actual problem, not what, what it looks like. It's, I appreciate the fact that you, your intention is to save lives, but there's not evidence I've seen so far that actually backs that up. So I hope we can consider that and look into things that we can do to, like she said, the previous speaker said, to encourage people to get off their device, park, speak, and get back on the road, rather than punishing people for things that don't, that are not backed up by evidence. So I hope we can consider that when we cast our votes.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Bill Strickland, 2962 Lexington Trace Drive. I've been a resident of Smyrna for 19 years, come to the end of February. I appreciate everybody else comes to talk about this issue in this town, but they're not a resident of this town. Whether it's heart stories from losing a child, I can't imagine. But our feelings is, this is my town. I live here. And y'all, well, the mayor knows I've been here for probably 18 years, come to city council with my next-door neighbor, now she's moved. I'm still coming. I think about this law as, remember when DUI came in? People, people drink, oh, it's all right, I only had a couple of drinks. Now, people go out to dinner, I'm not drinking. Have one drink, they are not going to drink anymore. Same thing with seatbelt law. I think it's great. Councilman Norton has brought this to attention. I don't get to speak in 18 years. How many times have you heard me, Mayor? Very few. This is something I think is very, very important that this city needs to take a hold of. Since the last city council meeting, when we had brought up, I've started watching people. It is amazing how many people look at their phone and drive. You'll pass somebody, and it's like, what were they doing? And I'm looking now just to make sure. They're looking through their damn phone. Excuse me, but it irritates me, because you know what? They're not going to pay attention. All of a sudden, they've hit me. I've been hit by DUI. It was on Good Friday, and I'd gone to eat some fish, and I was coming up Concord Road, stopped at a red light, coming up for spring, and this lady just come over and hit me. And I followed her until we found out it was a DUI. This is something we can control, we can change our mindset. We change the mindset of people drinking. We change the mindset of people with seatbelts. It's time we change the mindset of handheld devices. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Sheffield. I live at First Avenue Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia. Maybe somebody with one of the longer commutes to get here tonight, but I felt it was important to be here to represent the organization that I volunteer for. Professionally, I'm a professional engineer. By day, I work in traffic. My daytime responsibilities are to roam state routes out in Gwinnett County into Cab County. So I spend a good part of my day seeing traffic around me and seeing behavior of drivers around me, and a good part of the day I see folks being distracted on their phones. But the more important part of my representation here tonight is because I volunteer for the Georgia Office of Highway Safety distracted driving task team. It's a little bit of a mouthful, but it led me here tonight to, to listen to everyone's testimony and make sure that I offer my support. To the gentleman, the previous gentleman's concerns about data backing up distracted driving, I'll, I'll offer that there is no silver bullet for this situation. If you take someone's ability away to speak on their phone- If you take someone's ability away to speak on their phone while they're driving, that's not necessarily going to solve the issue wholesale. But I will add that I think that a hands-free law will contribute to a reduction in accidents that will witness as a result of folks being distracted on their phones. For one thing, if you have your phone on your seat or if you have it in your lap, if you have it someplace where you have to take your attention away from what you're doing, which is driving, then that will contribute to your temporary distraction and may contribute to an accident. Whether or not there's any data to back that up, I think we can all agree that anytime you take your eyes off the road and do any task inside your car, whether it be looking at something on your phone, reading a book, speaking to someone else in the car that's with you, all of these things are distractions. What this particular rule will try to control or try to reduce is the distraction that's created by the driver being on their cell phone while they're supposed to be operating their vehicle. My job, my responsibility as being task team leader for this distracted driving task team that I'm on is to educate the public about the dangers of distracted driving and what may happen as a result of that. Now Jenny was up here a few minutes ago and remarked about the statistics that everyone here should be familiar with with regard to the fatalities that Georgia is experiencing on an annual basis. Now, we all have to decide whether or not 1,493 people, if that's an acceptable loss or if that's something that we can control going forward. And I do think that y'all have a very unique position in that you're able to put something on the books tonight that will serve as an example for the state of Georgia. And I will say that the state of Georgia will be watching you tonight to, you know, observe what comes out of this vote. And I think that they will also be very interested in the outcomes so that they can make their decision in due course to make this a statewide rule as far as distracted driving goes. So the one thing I will add is that I regret not bringing my three-year-old and my five-year-old to this event because everybody's brought their children. But I'm in the same boat as everybody else. I have kids. I'm concerned about their safety. You know, it won't be long before they're driving on their own and I'm concerned about what the roads are going to be like when it comes time for them to be licensed drivers. But I would very much like to see this legislation passed because I think it's a great first step forward in having this situation be better controlled in terms of distraction. And I wish you all the best and thank you for having me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else who was sworn in that'd like to make any testimony? I'm going to ask it this time if Chief Lee will come up. That would be you. One of the, if there's another one else that would like to speak, I just want to ask the chief a couple of questions and I'm sure maybe the council's got questions also. You know, one of the issues that we have is we are, a lot of people come through Smyrna that are not residents of our city. Probably, I don't know. I'll throw out a number. 80,000 a day, maybe?
At least, yes.
So those 80,000 people that come to our city that are not Smyrna residents, how do you go about educating those folks and how are they going to be made aware? You swear them in? That's a heck of a note. Have to swear in the bleachers.
Wait, how come the lawyer doesn't have to be sworn in?
That is exactly why I stay out of most of my trouble. Thank you, Scott. Because there's so many that live in Paulding County, West Cobb, Marietta, Austell, Mableton, Patter Springs. I think that's an issue. Let me just, I truly believe if we adopt this tonight, I believe you're going to see a lot of other communities are going to fall in line that will say, you know, Smyrna did it, so we should do it. And it's not, I don't know that we can cure everything in the world, but I think the beginning of the process to educate folks, to make them more aware, because as we've talked around this table, you, maybe you don't even notice until you start to look about how many people are driving down the road and they've got their phone or their, whatever it is, in their hand and, I mean, electronic device and they're on the phone and they're not paying attention and, you know. But the question is, how would we be able to educate everyone about this?
Well, one of the things that we're in the process of doing, we've been, Scott Andrews and I and my department, we are in the process, we have a professional video production company coming in to help us put together a public service announcement with this. So it'll be a video program. We actually have some students from Campbell High School who are participating. So our goal with this is to reach all the different age levels. You know, you get to children, I hate to say children, they're young adults involved with it. And to be honest, we, yeah, people talking on the phone, but I'll be honest, texting is even worse. And, you know, so you have to start somewhere. And I think of an analogy like this and you've probably heard this before. The little boy walking on the beach and he sees about 1,000 starfish that have washed up onto the beach. And he starts picking them up and throwing them back into the ocean and some person comes out, comes next to him and say, "Do you really think that you can help all these starfish?" He says, "No, but I just helped that one." So it's just like they brought up with seatbelts. I've been in this business a long time. I'm not going to say how long. But, you know, I've been through it where the seatbelts were, when we first started doing that, and the fines on those were very limited. But educating the, I think one of the big things is where you get into, the school system starts educating the children. A lot of times, the children correct the parent's behavior. So it'll be a process. It's not going to be something that solves the problem overnight. But, you know, we'll be doing that. I've also purchased 500 hands-free devices. I don't know what you call them. You got one there. It has this magnetic sticker. It goes on the back of your phone and it's got another attachment that goes into your air vent. So we'll be giving those out to Smyrna residents as the supply lasts. Obviously, they cost money. But, and then when, if the ordinance gets passed and we first start, one of the things that we're going to be doing, some of our officers are going to be issued some of these too. And as they pull people over for that, you know, we'll probably give them one of those. Word gets around too. If you start issuing citations and a lot of times people look at that as punishment, but, you know, but what is punishment? More times than not, what you're trying to do is to correct somebody's behavior and get desired behavior. And sometimes that's what you have to do with adults is hit them in the pocketbook. But $150 is, as far as traffic fines go, that's a pretty low amount or reasonable amount, I should say.
And the things that we're doing, the videos, the hands-free devices, that's all purchased through funds that we, that's not through taxpayers, that was just through funds that we collected.
That was when people have to go through the, where they like to go through our traffic school, it costs them, I think it's $75 to go through it. And we take those funds and they're used for crime prevention type things like this. So it was no additional cost to the taxpayers.
So the way that the ordinance is set up now is that if it's approved tonight, then it will not go into effect until 45 days?
Ninety.
April the 2nd?
Yes.
Okay.
Chief, can I ask a couple of questions that aren't with you guys?
Sure.
So there's a state law now that deals with texting and driving, right?
Yeah, so you can call it that.
Yeah, and you smiled because it's hard to enforce?
It's, yes, it's very difficult to enforce.
And so the ordinance that we have is proposed today goes further than the state law? Is that?
No question, yes.
And so you think our ordinance would be easier from your perspective to enforce than the state law?
Oh, no question, no question.
And so you understand that the way our ordinance is set up, if it is passed, it's basically, among other things, it's kind of like a test for two years.
Yes.
So it's effective, once it becomes effective on April 2nd, then it's in place for two years to allow us to get data to compare if there's any change of behavior from our law that would exist then to what the state law that's existed up till now.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Let me point out one thing. I heard one of the parties say something about affecting their driving history. With this being a city ordinance, this would be a no-point violation. So it wouldn't affect their vehicle insurance cost or, you know, create any additional issues on their driver history.
If someone's issued a warning, does that even go in?
Well, it goes into our system.
Right.
Into our record management system. That way, you know, if we've already given somebody a warning, somebody pulls them over and they run their name on our internal record management system, that could populate. And then they say, well, you've already been given one warning. But no, it does not go in any state.
Mr. Welch has a question.
Chief, I think that the simplicity of this ordinance is that if it's in your hand and you're holding it, you're breaking the law. Is that a simple answer to that?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions of Chief Lee, the distinguished Chief Lee who was sworn in, so I know he told the truth.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that the funds from the driver education classes was what was paying for the hands-free devices that you were going to give out?
For the 500 I purchased, yes, ma'am.
And I'm just wondering, also you mentioned some kind of a video or something that y'all put together. Just wondering, you know, where the, is it, the funds coming, using?
Scott Andrews is paying for that one.
Oh, okay, thank you.
But let me say this, this video production company we use for other things too, so. And it's not an outlandish price, I'll tell you that. They're a local company based out of Cobb County. In fact, I've known the owner of it back when he worked for Metro Ambulance.
Are there any other questions of Chief Lee? Thank you, Chief. Anyone else that was sworn in that would like to make any comment or testimony? Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Norton?
If there's no other comment, I'd like to, Mr. Fennel, did you want to?
Thank you.
I think Mr. Fennel had a comment.
All right, Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protim, and thank you for expressing leadership on an issue important for the public discourse and debate in our community, in our state, and in our nation. Frankly, this is a national problem that we have to grapple with. I've been chairman of a not-for-profit group for well over a decade and on the board for over 25 years called Team Georgia. We've worked with Mr. Sheffield and the team with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety from the outset for safe behavior on the part of both drivers and others to make sure we have proper awareness on our roadways and on our waterways, on alcohol related to driving. And then, when we got through the period where mobile phones came into being and are now pervasive in our world, we've gotten involved in the discussion around distracted driving, which is a broader issue than just mobile phone technology. People in your automobile are distracting you as a driver sometimes. Radio, commentary on the radio, whether it's music or it's talk shows, there are plenty of distractions and it is a challenge for every driver in this modern, busy world to be totally focused on the performance of their duties while behind the wheel. We want to maximize that proper behavior and we want to make sure we protect every driver and every pedestrian in the state. So my not-for-profit work for the last 25 years has been about this issue. I'm very proud of the work our Team Georgia efforts with our partnerships have been able to bring about. Seatbelt change, laws change, about lowering blood alcohol content, both in automobiles and on our waterways. So I'm a bit vexed and conflicted because I have an ethical challenge that I want to just share in my current position. I have been an advocate and I remain an advocate on behalf of this issue, but I actually work as chair of a group that does this, trying to advocate at every government level for this kind of behavior. Now, I have an opinion as an individual. I'm going to just express it, but I think that it is important everybody understand it from our not-for-profit organization. We at Team Georgia prefer statewide solutions to this and other types of problems, but some jurisdictions, much like our efforts around the country, where local and state governments are the incubators of our democracy, good ideas can come from a lot of places, but we have to test the theoreticals with practical application. And in this is a case specifically here in Smyrna, where we're going to apply an idea and we're going to put something in place and we're going to get some data over the course of a couple of years. And hopefully, whether the state does anything this year, next year, or not at all, we will at least have some data points that'll be instructive both to our community, our law enforcement officials, our advocates, and legislators who are at every level determining whether or not there are certain things we need to do. Maybe the verbiage of the law when passed at the legislature or at the local level isn't 100% where it needs to be at the end of the day. I applaud those who are pushing forward for the conversation and we as a community trying to protect our families, our friends, and each other. It is important that we say something. And I'm proud of the fact that we're contributing to the debate on this issue and initiating the conversation. It is important that we do this and distracted driving is a challenge. If we save only one life through this effort, I think it will all be worth it, regardless of the cost, one life. Think of those families who spoke about the lives that are lost, affected, impacted. I think we need to move forward to try to help that discussion, try to solve the problem and find what the best solution is. Maybe this isn't it, but this is the start of the conversation. And Mr. Mayor, as reluctant as I am because of my advocacy all these years and the fact that I do this as a part of my job, I am reluctantly going to recuse myself because I have confidence that the remainder of the team here will vote for it and will be able to pursue it, but I didn't want my personal to be affecting the outcome of this vote. So I shall recuse myself, Mr. Mayor, but I'm supportive of the effort.
Mr. Norton, you ready to make your motion now? Well, I'd like to get a motion on the floor and then we can have a discussion. May not need to be any, yeah.
I'll make it short and sweet. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a very important issue, but one community can't solve it. We don't need 10 different communities coming up with these ordinances that are just a tad off here or a tad off there. It's going to be the most confused mess that you ever hoped for. The state has got, we need to put pressure on the state to do their job. Thank you.
I hope you don't mean like the fireworks law.
Mr. Mayor?
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Norton.
I'll make a motion to approve item 6A, ordinance 2017-15, approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 98, entitled Traffic and Vehicles, to include Section 9810 prohibiting the use of handheld mobile telephones or portable electronic devices while operating a motor vehicle.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to have to make a bigger change than almost of my habits than almost anybody in this audience. I've had calls supporting this ordinance. I've had calls opposing it, emails, text messages, all of the above. I drive about 40,000 miles every year around Georgia. Very soon after this ordinance first was being discussed by the city council, I had an occasion in two days for two people to pull out in front of me, both of them on their cell phones. I'm going to support the ordinance this evening and if it only saves that one life or prevents one child from being injured, that vote is well worth it. Despite the opposition of friends, close family, I support the ordinance for the safety of the people of Smyrna. Thank you.
Mr. Stoner?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a slightly different perspective on this issue.
I actually served in the General Assembly when the original texting legislation was passed. And I would say that it wasn't until a few years later that we fully understood that what we had passed really was not effective, as explained by our police chief. As to the issue of the state doing its job, my own personal experience has been that generally the state needs a push to do its job. Things that would seem obvious that should be taken care of. Sometimes it becomes a little more obvious when you have local governments making that point to the state. And as to the issue, yes, you may have different ordinances in different communities, which then kind of pushes the state to eventually come out with either a base ordinance and then other communities can add on to that. So the way I see this tonight is this is an opportunity for this city and for this community to take the lead and show other communities how we did that. And we're not just doing something, you know, this isn't the first time this has been done in this country. It's been done around many states. So we're not evading the will here. And so for me, this is kind of a way to correct, let's say, a piece of legislation I passed and failed to, it failed to do its job. There's another way to start this and hopefully the folks at the state legislature are paying attention to what was mentioned and other communities are too and will take our example and run with it also. So I'm definitely supporting this piece of legislation. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anyone else? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion? That is three yea and three nay and Mr. Fennel abstained. It's not the first time this happened when it's left up to me to make the final vote. And I want to take a minute and just, my good friend Ron Fennel, who's been on this council for six years, I'm sorry, I just disagree with you. I think you should come back up here, take your seat and vote yea or nay for this issue, but that's just me. And as I told the council prior to the meeting, however this goes, we're going to move on to the next issues in our, with our city, so. As general speaking, I don't much like government telling me what to do when it comes to certain things. But if we sit back and wait for the state to take care of this, this issue's been going on for years and years and years. And in my humble opinion, there's too many lobbyists out there that are supporting candidates that they're never gonna, or it should have been taken care of years ago. But there's such a large lobbyist that's got a lot of money and they've put money behind these candidates that it's likely not going to happen anytime soon. I believe when I cast my vote, I do it without fear of favor and act as I believe was in the best interest of the city of Smyrna. I've taken that oath since 1980. And to this day, that's what I'll do. Do I think this is going to correct or fix things? No, but I think it's going to be the beginning, will be the first city in the state of Georgia to have this ordinance that will begin to educate our folks and change their habits. I just got mine, I didn't get one of the hands-free deal on the, from the police department. I couldn't figure out how to make that work. And I didn't want anything on the back of my phone. So I went to Amazon for nine dollars and sixty-four cents. It's hooked up now and I still have some issues with it. And, but that'll go on forever, so, but I think it's just a change in our habits as to what we do. It terrifies me sometime to see folks on their phone using handheld devices and... This is just a step in the right direction. So I'm going to vote yes, that we adopt this ordinance. I have no reservations, I don't have any. I do it without fear of favor and act as I believe in the best interest of the city of Smyrna. So this will pass four to three with that. If you'll so, record that. If you want to call me on my cellphone later tonight, it'll be in my handheld device. So that's approved, that ordinance is approved four to three. Item 6, 6B, 2018-02, approval of Ward 5 reappointment of Sherri Harrington to the Planning and Zoning Board for a term that expired December of 2019. That is Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to move to approve item 6B, 2018-02, approval of the Ward 5 reappointment of Sherri Harrington to the Planning and Zoning Board for a term to expire December 2019.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item C, 2018-09, approval of appointment of Ward 3 resident Adam Taylor to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term to expire December 2019. Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve 2018-09, the approval of appointment of Ward 3 resident Adam Taylor to Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term to expire December 2019.
Got a motion second, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion? It's approved seven zero. We'll continue on with the Marilyn Blackburn hour. 6D, 2018-10, approval of reappointment of Ward 3 resident Keith Bentley to Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire 12/31/2019. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve 2018-10, approval of reappointment of Ward 3 resident Keith Bentley to Parks and Recreation Commission. This is a term that will expire on 12/31/2019.
Motion second, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion? I heard, Mr. Stoner? It's approved seven zero. Item E, 2018-11, approval of the appointment of Ward 3 resident Monty Bai to the Planning and Zoning Board for the term to expire 12/31/2019. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve 2018-11, approval of the appointment of Ward 3 resident Monty Bai to the Planning and Zoning Board for a term to expire 12/31/19.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion? It's approved seven zero. Item F, 2018-12, approval of appointment of Ward 3 resident Tanisha Simpson to the Smyrna Housing Authority for a term to expire 12/31/2022. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve 2018-12, the approval of appointment of Ward 3 resident Tanisha Simpson to the Smyrna Housing Authority for a term to expire 12/31/22.
Motion second, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion? Seven, it's approved seven zero. Ms. Blackburn, thank you very much for, you've only been in office since the 5th, right? And you've already, you've already appointed everybody to all these committees. Do they know this? Thank you very much. You got a heckler out there in the audience. Item G, 2018-13, approval of the appointment of Sean Martin, representing Ward 7, to the Smyrna Tree Board to fulfill a term to expire August 2020. And I know she's out here. I wave at her and her five-year-old daughter. You can't be driving down the road now with that. Unless it's Ron Fennel make that appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unable to find a Ward 7 resident willing to step forward, Ms. Blackburn has also helped me with this appointment. So I thank Ms. Martin for her willingness to continue to serve the city in another capacity. Thank you so much. And I move approval of the appointment through August 2020 of Sean Martin to the Smyrna Tree Board.
Motion second, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion?
It says Fennel right there.
Please vote. It's approved seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Blackburn, for doing Mr. Fennel's job. I'm just kidding. Sometimes it's difficult, seriously, sometimes it's difficult to find folks to serve on some of these boards. So for those that are right here in the audience, and we even, I want to say this for Mr. Fennel. I told every council member, if you can't find somebody in your district, you may can find somebody in somebody else's district. We're all the same, we'll just put us in a sack and shake us up. So, and I think Ms. Martin will make a good representative, probably move the standard up towards that, so thank you very much. I think I'll shut up. H is 2018-08, to recognize that the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority unanimously approved a new three-year rate program with a 2% annual rate increase or annual rate increases for both in-county and out-of-county customers through 2012. You want to get the background on that, Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
2020, I'm sorry.
This is an ongoing multi-year program of Cobb County Marietta Water Authority and basically all we're doing is passing this 2% on to the residents.
And before Mr. Welch makes the motion, I want to say that I serve on that board. And several years ago, we had an automatic eleven and a half percent increase until further notice. And we have changed that and reduced it. Our current policy was for a 3% increase for the next five years and this is the third year and we're reducing it down 2%. And we will look at our finances again next year and there may be a smaller, another reduction in the increase. But this is just 2%, so Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 2018-08, to recognize that the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority unanimously, to unanimously approve a new three-year rate program with a 2% annual rate increase for both in-county and out-of-county customers through 2020 and that the city of Smyrna accept that as passed through to our customers.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion? It's approved seven zero. Item M is the consent agenda. Mr. Andrews, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Sir, thank you, Mayor. Item A is 2018-07, approval of the December 18, 2017 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, 2018-06, approval of December 18, 2017, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, 2018-05, approval of December 14, 2017, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, 2018-03, approval to use council chambers on Wednesday, January 31, 2018, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the Heritage at Vining's annual HOA meeting.
Can I hear, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Norton, second by Mr. Fennel, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved. I don't know why it takes this, seven zero, thank you very much. Nine is committee reports, we'll start tonight, Mr. Derrick Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I just want to say a thank you to all citizens who provided input during this period where we were talking about this hands-free ordinance. I want to say a special thank you to the Clark family for being here again this evening. I think we've taken a real positive step towards better protecting Smyrna citizens and that's a good thing. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein? Okay, Ms. Marilyn Blackburn?
I don't have a report either, but I do want to say that on January 21st, that there's going to be a stamp increase. It's going to go from 49 cents to 50 cents. So make note of that and have a great evening. With that, I yield.
Thank you. I can't believe you're back for your second meeting. It's your second, you've done great so far. You're on a roll. Mr. Welch?
I have no report this evening, Your Honor, thank you.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank the staff, Parks and Recreation and Public Works and all their hard work on the beautiful lights that they had up around our downtown area. And I noticed today that the tree was coming down, it was halfway down and that they were beautiful and thank them for all their hard work.
Yeah, just before I recognize, Councilmember Stone, any reason why just half that tree came down today? I think the tree, just half of it came down.
No, sir.
Unless it took the rest, I thought maybe somebody was making some kind of statement like Green World or something or the Green Willie or something, I don't know. Mr. Stoner?
I have no report this evening.
Mr. Fennel?
Thank you, I have no finance report, but I do want to make mention of how Georgians, all of us in Smyrna across the state are proud of our Georgia Bulldogs representing the state. And next Monday night, there'll be quite a battle in town and our friends in Alabama are coming over as they usually do. I think a lot of people appreciate the fact that they've torn down the Georgia Dome because the winningest team in the Georgia Dome was the Alabama Crimson Tide. They're grateful they're not playing in that building, but that's the reality. But I want you all to just remember the safe opportunity that everybody has, safe driving out there on the roadways. The governor has recently declared an emergent, a weather advisory emergency for across parts of this state and it's going to make driving conditions hazardous. So if you're traveling in South Georgia, please be aware of that. And Happy New Year, it's going to be a great year. Thank you all.
Mr. Andrews, anything else?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge and commend our community relations department and police department for getting ahead of the curve in anticipation of this vote tonight. They went ahead and done a lot of legwork and research in hopes that we can hit the ground running with this public awareness campaign video. Hopefully by the end of the month, if not early February. In addition to that, staff is working to get out into the schools and the universities so the public is well aware. That's all, sir. Actually, I'll defer to Mrs. Wilkinson. She had one more item.
No, Mr. Cochran?
No, I have nothing.
Ms. Graham? Okay, Ms. Wilkinson, you got something else?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, for those of you who have your trees half down in your homes, in your real trees, I wanted to remind everyone that there's Bring One for the Chipper Christmas Tree Recycling Event that's happening January 6th, this Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Home Depot in Vining's. And you can bring your tree there and they will recycle it. Thank you, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. We have nothing under show cause hearing, citizens' input. Some of these folks, they may have already spoken. Craig and Kathy Clark, I think they were part of the group that came to talk about hands-free. Jenny Hartley, Chuck Martin, Stephen Sheffield. Everybody's home, I guess, snuggled up next to the warm fireplace. So that's the only folks that we had that signed up for public input. If there's no other business to go before this body, I will declare this meeting adjourned at 8:28.